Where's Mitzi? We were just saying Mitzi, we could use it as a valid excuse that a foreign military power hacked into our town hall.
I think we have everything working now.
All right, Catherine, thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the Scarborough-Guilwood 424 virtual town hall. Today, we're joined by all three levels of government in Scarborough-Guilwood. From the city of Toronto, we have councillor Paul Ainsley. From the province, we have MPP Mitzi Hunter. And from the federal government, we have the honourable Don McKay. Councillor Ainsley was first elected to Toronto City Council in 2006. He's now in his third term and he has diligently worked for his residents. As Chair of the Government Management and Municipal Licensing Committee, Paul has been tasked to ensure that transparency in our government is shared by all. Born and raised in Scarborough, where Paul currently lives, with his three wife and children. Mitzi was elected as Member of Provincial Parliament in 2013, and she's in her third term as the MPP for Scarborough-Guilwood. She is currently the critic for Finance and Treasury and is the former Minister of Education. She also recently served as the Minister of Advanced Education and Skills Development. Finally, the Honourable John McKay was first elected as Member of Parliament in 1997. He was re-elected in October of 2019 to serve his eighth term in House of Commons. He currently represents the constituency of Scarborough-Guilwood and is Chair of the Standing Committee on Public Safety and National Security. So, we have invited constituents to submit questions ahead of time by phone and by email, and we've had an overwhelming response. So, we'll start off with some of these questions, but please feel free to ask questions in the comments. I apologize for the technical difficulties that have the way of response. It's okay with everyone, we can go a few minutes late. So, our first question comes from Andre and is for all levels of government. Andre is interested in detailed planning for reopening the economy and society. He wants to know when we can expect more details for both the short and the long term? What are our plans for a second wave? Can we start planning now with details? I'll open it up for answers.
I can start. I think the first thing that we have to do in terms of opening up the economy is deal with the health crisis that is before us in terms of COVID-19. We really have to make sure, doubly sure, that Ontario's economy doesn't falter if we open prematurely. And so, this week, the Government of Ontario issued three stages that need to be considered when we are looking at opening up the economy. And I think the most important part of that phase is really the health risk, that we're confident that as we track the spread of the virus, that it's declining. And we want to see that anywhere from two to four weeks consistently decreasing in terms of the number of cases of COVID-19. And that there is adequate and appropriate ability for the government to identify where cases are occurring, that those cases can be traced to specific individuals and, of course, contained to those individuals and that it's not spread amongst the community. Also, making sure that we have adequate public health capacity. The Financial Accountability Office of Ontario issued a report this week that measured Ontario's hospital capacity to deal with COVID-19. And we are actually very well-prepared with ICU and critical care beds in Ontario, should there be a surge on our healthcare system, so we can have some confidence in that. And then, making sure that there is the ability to track any incidences that would occur. So, certainly from a provincial standpoint, it's about making sure that we can manage the health crisis and that those cases are coming down steadily over a sustained period of time.
I think from the federal standpoint, the federal government is largely deferential to the provinces. Each province has its unique challenges, and you saw actually a divergence in approach between Ontario and Quebec. Quebec seems to have taken a bit more of an aggressive approach and Ontario not quite so aggressive. I think the big issue is that there is a linkage between health and the economy, and it's contradictory. The health requirements are that we isolate, that we separate. An economy by definition means that we are actually working together and are interacting with each other. So, those are divergent demands for constituents who are looking for precise opening points in the economy. I think they will look in vain because this is inevitably a moving target. I'm rather hoping that the Ontario Government and, to a lesser extent, the city government will eliminate some things that are clearly not risk to the population and allow those elements of opening that can be opened with minimal risk, because this ultimately, at the end of the day, is a management of risk.
Yep, and from the municipal level, I echo what John and Mitzi are saying. You know, it's all about, as they say, flattening the curve, making sure that we're doing everything properly, that we get as many people tested as possible, that making sure everybody's practicing the social distancing guidelines. I think what's paramount importance to everybody is that everybody be safe and secure and that we do our very best to ensure that we don't see a second wave coming through. Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you. So, this is another one that's a broad kind of issue, but since it involves Dr. Teresa Tam, I'll ask John to weigh in first. We've seen a rise in racist incidents in response to COVID-19 pandemic, particularly against Asian-Canadian communities. So, what is being done to address this rise in racist incidents?
This is so discouraging. The last direct face-to-face conversation I had with the Prime Minister was over lunch at a Chinese restaurant in Agent Court. And the attempt at that point was to demonstrate on the part of the Prime Minister, the Scarborough Caucus and the rest of the government, that the attacks on the Chinese community were absolutely unacceptable. And yet they go on. And this is very discouraging. This has not to do with, anything to do with our local Chinese community or even the international Chinese community or even the people of China. So, I honestly, you know, other than repeating the same concerns over and over again, there are days I despair. I particularly despair of comments on part of one of my colleagues. And I wish he hadn't said what he said, but he did say what he said. I take note that the Conservative Caucus is attempting to deal with what one of my colleagues said. I have nothing but absolute admiration for Dr. Tan. I think she has provided the Government of Canada and the people with Canada with the best possible advice that we can hope for. I think she has been brilliant in her management of the risk. I think she has given us honest, straightforward advice based upon a lifetime of experience and a expertise that is unparalleled. She is a national treasure and she has she has, and her talent as an epidemiologist is recognized around the world, hence her position on the WHO. So, I guess we always have, in these kinds of national issues bumps, I regret that this bump has come up. And I say to all the citizens in Scarborough-Guilwood and all the citizens in Canada, Dr. Tam is a national treasure. There is no basis, absolutely no basis for any commentary to the contrary.
Yeah, I just want to add one tiny thing on this, because I think John has nailed it. There's no place for any form of racism in Ontario and Canada. And we're a country that is built on multiculturalism and inclusion. And, you know, whenever we see acts of racism, we should call it out and just really not tolerate it. Look at the faces of the heroes during this pandemic. Look at the people who are out there on the front lines in long-term care, providing personal support work or maintaining our nursing system, our food supply chain. You know, look at those faces, because those faces represent a very broad diversity in Canada, and they're the heroes of this pandemic. So, not only is there no place for any form of racism, but also it is a time that we should come together and we should all embrace and appreciate each other and the humanity that we all share during this crisis.
Yeah, it's the one thing that I always appreciate as a city councillor in Toronto. When I'm talking with people and I say, you know, why did you come to Toronto? What brought you here? And the first thing that people always say to me is, you know, they came here, they can practise their religion, they can live in their community without fear of any type of persecution. And I think that's really what makes us Canada. And, you know, unfortunately, we have isolated cases of racism and people get uptight or stressed during a pandemic. But we really, you know, need to call those instances out and do our best to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this question is for Mitzi. Her view on May 1st for countless Ontarians. What is being done for tenants that are paying rent? We've seen some relief for people collecting rent and still being able to defer some mortgage payments while tenants continue to pay some of the highest prices.
So, this is something that I know is on so many people's minds right now. On Friday is another month that's rolling around when hundreds and thousands of Ontarians' lives have been completely disrupted, not able to go to work, mandated to not be able to go to work, and therefore, that paycheck is not coming in as it normally does. Obviously, John can speak to the measures that the federal government has stepped in to provide in terms of emergency payments to people. And I know that that's being well-used by many Ontarians. But the fact of the matter is, there really hasn't been any residential supports in Ontario that we've seen in other provinces such as BC, where there was a $500 support for people who needed to offset their rents. So, that still is an area that residential rent relief is an area that is still needed in Ontario. The government has taken steps to prevent evictions. So, there is no evictions being done at this time. The landlord and tenant board will not issue evictions at this time. But at the same time, people feel the pressure, because, you know, even if they haven't paid rent, the amount owing is still piling up and will one day become due and put people at risk of not being able to continue to be housed. And we can't have that in our province. So, I issued a statement this week calling on the provincial government to respond now with rent relief and perhaps follow the BC model of the $500 amount and certainly to put a moratorium on rent increases at least until the end of the year.
Thank you, Mitzi. We have a question in the comments from Jeff. I believe this one is for Paul and maybe Mitzi. While we see good statistic updates for Toronto's COVID-19 cases, the Public Health Unit for Toronto covers many wards. Do you have any indication on how Ward 24 is doing in terms of higher or lower than average?
Yeah, so there's guidelines around releasing health information. So, our health department doesn't release any information on a word-by-word basis. They have the citywide information. They've actually got an interactive website on toronto.ca that you can go to, which is releasing real-time information on the COVID cases across the city, not just on a numbered basis. They also do it by gender, different age categories, but they don't release any personal information on what's happening on a word-by-word basis.
Thank you, Paul. Another one for you. What will happen to July and August property tax scheduled payments?
So, right now with property taxes, we've, all of the spring tax, property taxes have been deferred. So, if yours was due on, say, April 1st, they've been deferred for 60 days. So, they've done that for March, April and May. And once we get further in along, hopefully, we'll start to see the curve flatten out and we'll look at restarting the economy in June is, I think, what our best guess is now. And then, we'll be looking at what we're going to do with the summer property tax payments. If you don't want to defer your property taxes and do want to continue to pay them, there is a mechanism to continue to pay them if you want. And you can also get in contact with your bank as well if you're making property tax payments through your bank.
Well, maybe I could jump in on this, because I think the next big thing in this crisis is the difficulties with respect to municipalities. Maybe you could offer some commentary on, if you will, the burn rate of the government of Toronto, the city of Toronto, and the anticipation of when it might actually run out of money. And because you have, if you will, statutory limitations on the ability to raise money, unlike the provincial and the federal government. So, maybe it would be useful to indicate to the constituents what this actually means in real terms, because I don't think you want to be the councillor that's going to be talking about cuts back, cutbacks to services and layoffs and et cetera, et cetera. So, maybe it's an opportunity to say what the implications of this decline in revenues might be.
Yeah, so thanks, John. We do have what's called, it's referred to as a burn rate. And that talks about, so we look at what it's costing to run the city. So, basically, it's the money that we're spending versus the money that we would see coming in as revenue. For example, permits in our parks. The big one is the Toronto Transit Commission, where we see a loss of about $20 million a week just from the Toronto Transit Commission. And we depend on all of that money to run the city. So, collectively, we refer to the burn rate, which is a buy, puts us behind the eight ball, $65 million a week. And one of the things that I always joke about in the Canadian Constitution, you can never see the word "city". And so, you know, we depend on the provincial and federal government to support us financially in a number of different areas. And we're also not allowed to carry a deficit or a debt. So, all that being said, we're trying to figure out how to manage the city. Unfortunately, we just had to lay off 1,200 of our TTC employees. As I mentioned earlier, we have a huge revenue to cost ratio gap there. And unfortunately, we had to temporarily lay off employees to cover that gap.
Thank you. So, a question for Mitzi. We all know that pharmacists have put a 30-day limit on medication dispensing, but co-pays are being paid three times instead of once for a three-month supply. What is being done to address the increasing co-pay?
Thank you so much. This is a question that we've been getting from residents in Scarborough-Guilwood who traditionally had been able to purchase their, or obtain their prescription medication in three months' supply. And in response to the pandemic, the province limited the amount to one month's supply just to make sure that we have adequate amounts of prescription medication for everyone in the province who needed access to that medication. But one of the consequences of doing that is that each time someone goes to the pharmacist to fill a prescription, there is a co-pay as part of the dispensing fee that goes to the pharmacist. So, that, you know, it might be, the fee varies depending on the pharmacist, you know, $3.50. It might not sound like a lot, but if you're a senior who is on fixed income or an individual who, you know, has a very, very tight budget, that amount adds up. So, we've been getting a lot of requests in my constituency office to, you know, ask the provincial government to stop that fee or work with the pharmacist's community to stop it. And we've actually asked this question directly of the health minister. And the response we've gotten back is, you know, is not satisfactory, in my opinion. You know, they're asking individuals basically to negotiate with their pharmacists and to ask them to, you know, to not charge this fee. Some of our residents have actually tried to do that, and they do notice that some of the smaller independent pharmacies have, you know, waived the fee, which is gracious of them. But overall, it has been a big challenge. The minister has said that she is aware of the issue and that they are going to be addressing it, but we're still waiting. And, you know, once again, another month is coming when many people are going to have to refill those prescriptions. And unfortunately, that dispensing fee is still there. So, there is much more that we can do. It is a small amount, but, you know, those dollars do add up and people need to keep that money in their pocket, especially at this time when they're dealing with a pandemic and potentially have lost most of their income.
Thank you. So, I'm getting feedback that it's a bit hard to hear me. So, if I could ask you all to repeat the question I'm asking, just so that everyone in the audience knows what we're talking about, that would be great. So, our next question is for Paul and John. I know that you just mentioned that unfortunately, 1,200 TPC employees had to be laid off. This question comes from the comments from Austin. Would it be possible for the federal government to invest some additional funds in the TPC? Because those workers, if laid off, would be getting federal funding through the CERB anyway. Is that something that you're looking into? Is that a possibility?
Not sure that I understand the question. Additional funds in terms of infrastructure funds or in terms of support for employees or things of that nature? I'm not quite sure, I quite, Paul, maybe you understand the question better than I do, but I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
Yeah. I think what they're saying, John, is instead of laying off 1,200 employees, is there's some support through the CERB that they can receive personally to subsidize their wages, so they're not laid off.
Wouldn't the city be entitled to the same application for the 75% subsidy that everybody else is?
Yep, yep.
So, that's your subsidy. So, I would think that equality of treatment is the appropriate response and that there is already a subsidy that's available through the federal government.
Thank you. This question is for Paul from email. What food and financial supports are available to seniors by the city? And if you could repeat that, that would be great.
Yeah, so what financial support for food do we have for seniors? Unfortunately, as at the municipal level, we don't really have any programs or financial supports for seniors for food at this time.
I just point out that we put up $100 million last week for food insecurity or food security, as the case may be. And five organizations, including Salvation Army and the Breakfast Clubs, et cetera, et cetera, received something in the order of about $20 million each in order to be able to purchase food. And then, they will in turn distribute it out through the networks of those various clubs. I think that's probably one of the most significant initiatives that the federal government has taken in order to be able to make sure that everybody is eating during this crisis.
Yeah, I think more from the municipal level. We're trying to help everybody the best of our ability by deferring property taxes. We've deferred utility bills for water and electricity. We're trying to do what we can within our means and jurisdiction to help people. We're running the, as John said, there's food banks right in our own ward. There's five and two kitchens, it's a soup kitchen. Trying to do what we can within the powers that we have.
Yeah, and people can contact 211 to find out where they can go for assistance for food banks in the community. And just to make sure that at this time, you know, no one is left hungry and that people have what they need, in particular for seniors. Many of the food bank responses are changing their approach to actually get food out to seniors who need it or who need assistance in getting that food. So, please, that resource that the city has, 211 as well.
Yeah, it was $100 million, and I'm just reading from the Government of Canada website here. Food Banks Canada, Salvation Army, Second Harvest Community Food Centers and Breakfast Club of Canada. And they in turn will spread that money among the various partnerships and networks. So, it's a pretty significant response on the part of the Government of Canada. I expect that if this continues longer than any of us would wish, that that will have to be topped up.
Yeah, I also want to say, for those people who might be listening or who have partnerships, you know, with a community in Scarborough-Guilwood, the provincial government through Ontario Disability Support Program, OW, is providing a $100 emergency benefit. And this amount, you just need to contact your caseworker that you would normally contact, and they will give you access to this $100 one-time benefit. You know, I know that that's going to make a difference for some individuals, and it is available.
And there's also the Red Cross. The city of Toronto has a partnership with the Red Cross for seniors that can't get out of their homes. They can register through my office for that if they want. And that Red Cross will deliver food hampers to seniors' homes that qualify.
Great, thank you. This next question is for Don from ZAD. What is the federal government doing to help with mortgage relief? Are there any plans in the works? What would you want to tell homeowners that are currently in position of paying interest on deferred mortgage payments?
So, the question is about mortgage deferrals. Currently, if you go to your bank, you can negotiate a mortgage deferral. And it's deferral, it's not a cancellation, it's not a, not a, a free card by any means. And that will postpone the mortgage payment. The concern is the doubling up of interest. And I know the caucus has been all over that, and it continues to be a point of contention, because not only are you deferring the payment, but you're, the payment, which is a combination of principal and interest, but you don't want interest to be accumulating. So, thus far, I think, you know, on the 1st of April, it was $800 million of deferred mortgage payments. May 1st is right around the corner. I expect that that will be even higher. And let's hope that we're not going to be getting the same kinds of numbers for June 1st. So, $800 million where the deferrals is a significant sum of money.
Thank you. This question is for Mitzi from Jane. Is the province tracking overall deaths in Ontario to get a clearer picture of the state of the situation? Perhaps folks are avoiding the hospital or are dying from unreported COVID-19 infections?
Okay, hi, Jane. So, at this time, we are getting daily updates from the province, the Chief Medical Officer of Health and the deputy on, you know, direct on, you know, direct tracking for COVID-19 deaths and those also in long-term care. Because unfortunately, one of the sad realities of COVID-19 is that it has really ravaged our elderly population, particularly those who are in long-term care in our seniors' home. One of the earliest outbreaks in seniors' home occurred right in our community at Seven Oaks, at Nielsen and Elsmer. And unfortunately, in many long-term care homes across the province and the country, in fact, those deaths continue to climb. We are seeing a better response from the province in recent days in terms of, you know, bringing in the military for the most inneed locations that were short of staff. And we thank the Government of Canada, and in particular, MP Bill Blair, for signing off on that. And also, hospital and medical responses has now become even more available for people who are in long-term care. Just this week, as I mentioned earlier, the Financial Accountability Officer released a report on the hospitals in Ontario and their capacity to manage a surge and to manage through this pandemic. And what it revealed was that we actually have a lot of capacity that is not currently being used in our hospitals because, you know, elective surgeries were canceled and many other routine treatments were not being done at this time. And that has resulted, the Minister of Health has actually admitted that there are some 35 people who perhaps have fallen victim to not getting their regular treatment that was scheduled because of the pandemic. And they, you know, have fallen victim to COVID, even though COVID was not the reason why they passed on. So this is a concern. You know, something that we are looking into. Some of the hospital executives have really called on the government, for instance, to have funding available to increase a ramp-up of those surgeries, maybe, you know, round the clock on weekends, and making sure that there's a plan in place to get, to catch up and to make sure everyone gets the healthcare that they definitely need.
I just add in here, Mitzi has alluded to the indirect costs of COVID. And one of the indirect costs that's emerging is the postponement of surgeries, which is a more dramatic aspect. But it's not only a postponement of surgeries, but it's the failure to go to doctors when you should be going to see doctors and doing the routine health things that you should be doing but you don't feel like doing because of your declining mental health or, you know, not going out and doing the things that are good for you, either, you know, exercise or something of that nature. And it's very hard to quantify all of these indirect health costs. But it does speak to the larger issue of why it's so difficult to be precise about how to open up the normal function of an economy and of society. So I think it's an interesting phenomenon that all three of us are on the same page, as are all three levels of government on the same page. And yet, normally, there is not a very friendly relationship, particularly between the federal government and the provincial government. And yet, it's kind of a testimony to our nation that we actually have all pulled together in spite of our political views.
I truly agree with that, John. And, you know, one of the things that everyone knows is when you need the medical system, you want it to be there for your loved one. And, you know, just today, I had a need for the hospital system, for my dad, my stepdad, actually. And my brother and I worked together to take him through the emergency process. It was extremely well organized. And, you know, one of the things that my brother said to me was how caring and how gentle everyone was during that need that we had as a family. And so I just want to say a huge thank you to all of our healthcare heroes and those people who, you know, paramedics and, you know, the intake people and, you know, those who clean the facilities. And, you know, we are living in the best province and the best country in the world. And our medical system and our ability to work together has been tested during this pandemic. And I believe that we have a system that, yes, there are improvements that we need to make, but it is the people, the dedicated people, who are so skilled and so talented, and they put it all out there for taking care of everybody. And I just want to say a huge thank you to all of the healthcare heroes.
Amen, sister.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that. This question, I think, is for Paul. It's from the comments. As staged reopening happens, the ridership on transit will increase and the ability for social distancing will be reduced. Transit capacity in the GTA is such that social distancing is impossible on a normal ride. How are you going to address this? And I'll ask you to repeat that in condensed form, if you can. I think there are still troubles with hearing.
Yeah, so what you're asking, Catherine, is so with the... Once we try and get our transit system or try and get our society back to a normal economic position, what we're going to do for transit and social distancing on transit? And there's so many issues now because of overcrowding. Is that in a nutshell?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So what we've done right now is we're trying to enforce some type of social distancing on all of our TTC vehicles. We're only allowing 50 people per vehicle. We're having people load by the back doors, so there's less interaction. So as we try and get the economy rolled out again and back to work, you know, depending on the situation with COVID-19, we're either going to have to find a way to continue the social distancing policies on vehicles. You know, we're going to have to buy more vehicles or make sure our fleets maintain much better than it is to impact those social distancing rules. But, you know, it is a huge issue, and we're going to have to come to grips with it.
I have another question for Mitzi, which we received both by email and in the comments. Why is Ontario's pandemic pay for frontline workers limited in scope when the list of essential workers is so large? And I'll ask you to repeat that if you can.
So this is definitely a concern that we've heard repeatedly. And it's the need for pandemic pay for those frontline workers that I was just talking about, all of those heroes. And it was something that, you know, certainly I had called for as part of the response to the long-term care situation. Because you had, you know, personal support workers and other staff who were not very well-paid, who were being asked at this time to show up for work and to do very challenging work. And so we pressed and continue to advocate for the provincial government to provide an increase in pay for those frontline healthcare workers who were not receiving adequate pay for what we were asking them to do, and we want to make sure that they're valued. And the government, you know, working together, as John has already said, recognized that this was something that was needed. And a $4 an hour was committed to over 350,000 workers who are doing this essential job. And just last night, the government also announced that other workers, such as paramedics, would be covered by this pandemic pay. And also, those workers, such as personal support workers, who are not just working for a government agency, but who are working perhaps for a private organization or nonprofit, would also qualify for this $4 an hour. So it is an important step. I know that there are other types of jobs that want to also benefit from this $4 an hour. But I do know that the government initial amounts were to go to those who have a direct role in dealing with individuals who are affected by the virus, and they have to provide that care.
Thank you, Mitzi. This is a question for all of you to weigh in on. This comes from Claudine. Can you clarify the social distancing rules for the general public? People need to strike a balance between being cautious and living their lives.
Paul, this is your jurisdiction. Better repeat the code.
Yeah. And so trying to clarify the rules around social distancing. And this is probably the one question that I was inundated with that most of people are trying to understand. And we call it the, you know, the 2-6. The 2-6, you know, you need to be two meters apart from other people or six feet. And I always call it, the very Canadian way to measure this, is to visualize a hockey stick. If I hold out a hockey stick or a lacrosse stick and I can poke you with it, you're too close to me. So you want to be six feet away or farther than that. And then we also have a rule we're following that's been mandated down on us from the province. Public gatherings, you can't have any more than five people in any public gathering. And we would prefer that people from households don't intermingle with each other. And this applies in all of our public spaces, including our parks. We've had some discussion around park benches. If you're going out for a walk, which we fully encourage, we don't want people gathering on park benches and hanging out. If you're out for a walk or, you know, you take your dog for a walk and you want to catch your breath on a park, that's fully allowed. But we're doing all that to monitor social distancing. The one good thing is if you have your family, any number of people who live in one household, and you decide to go out, the social distancing rules don't apply to you as long as you're only interacting in public amongst yourselves.
I just add a little bit of common sense would be appreciated. Some people just ignore these rules, and it's really quite depressing. The sooner... I think all three levels of government are repeating the notion that the more social distance and respect of the COVID protocols that we have, the greater likelihood is that we get ourselves out from this sooner rather than later. So you're actually not only counterproductive to the health of your neighbor, you're counterproductive to your own health by not maintaining these protocols. So a little common sense, a little respect for the other, and recognize that my health is your health and your health is my health. And my economy is your economy, and your economy is my economy. So, you know, the cliche is we're all in this together, and that's regrettably true. We are all in this together.
And I think one of the most frustrating things that I see, and I've heard this from a lot of people, is, you know, you go shopping or you go to the doctors and people are wearing their PPEs, their masks and gloves. And then you go out to the car or the bus, and there's masks and gloves littered around the parking lots, in particular grocery stores. And we really need people to have a greater amount of respect for each other. You know, you're wearing those masks and gloves outside of your home to stay healthy and not get others sick. But throwing them around and littering doesn't help either. And we do have bylaw licensing officers around the city. Many of them have been redirected from their regular work to enforce the social distancing laws. And littering comes with a $5,000 ticket. So, you know, throwing gloves and a mask around could come with a very steep price if you're actually caught doing that.
Don't get me started, Paul. You were... I was being calm and responsible and respectful up until now. But my wife and I go walking, because the gym's closed, down in the Highland Creek on a regular basis. And it drives me to some point of insanity to see in a beautiful, beautiful park, like the Highland Creek Park, gloves and masks littering the pathway, along with a bunch of other junk, by the way. It would be nice if people took some social responsibility for all of the junk that litters our parks and makes them much less attractive than they should be. But masks and gloves are just beyond the pale. Anyways, I'll get off my hobby horse right now.
Thank you, John, for...
For getting off the horse, yes.
Well, no, for as a Highland Creek resident, thank you for keeping our community clean. So the next question is for you, John. This comes from Renata. Who is responsible for Canada being prepared for an emergency like this pandemic? And how will we ensure that sufficient supply of PPE and funding to acquire it will be available in the future so that we're never caught off guard?
Excellent question. And the primary responsibility lies with the Government of Canada. And so being prepared or failing to prepare, I think that's where the responsibility lies. But of course, we are a devolved federation, and we share that ultimate responsibility with the provinces because the provinces are ultimately the deliverers of health services. But as an overall concept on pandemics and things such as that, we are the responsible level of government. On the secondary issue of how can we be better prepared? I think that when people look at their tax bill, which they will inevitably bill, it would be this time next year, while probably looking at this time this year, they are going to be possibly a little less reluctant to recognize that public health is critical to our prosperity as a nation and that we need to have independent supplies of protective material. So I think a serious examination of supply chains. I do not like the notion that we are dependent upon other nations for healthcare products. And I think as part of the big rethink post-pandemic, one of the things that has to be addressed is the supply chains, our ability to make simple things like masks and gowns, et cetera, but also our ability to make basic medicines. You know, the drug supply is largely dependent on other nations. And hence, the issue of rationing it down to one month's supply at a time because we have to be careful that we won't run out. Why? Because a lot of the ingredients for those drugs are made elsewhere, and we are highly dependent upon them arriving on our shores. So I'm glad that question was asked. It will, at the beginning of the day and the end of the day, be the federal government's responsibility. However, as I say, it is a shared jurisdiction, and there is necessarily a big rethink that's going to have to take place once we get through this issue.
Thank you, John. So this question is from Mohammed. I think it's one for both Paul and Mitzi. We've heard of some missing COVID-19 lab test results. Mohammed wants to know what steps are being taken to avoid a repeat of this occurrence and what is being done to address this issue?
Mitzi, do you want to... I think it's more of a provincial... Mitzi, do you want to, I think it's more of a provincial.
Great. So testing is, is definitely a provincial responsibility. And I, I'm sure Mohammed, you've seen many starts and stops when it comes to our testing capacity and on, on, in Ontario. At what point the reagent was in short supply, exactly what John, John has just said, that we need to be in better control of our, of, of our supply chain and particularly for, for, for drugs that are necessary to keep our population safe and reagent is certainly one of those. And I understand in listening to one of the updates from the Dr. Tam that, that there are companies that are now producing reagent in Canada so that we can control those supplies. We then had a concern around the swabs and whether or not we had enough of those swabs and, and many other aspects of testing that, that, that really could have perhaps gone a bit better in Ontario. It is now ramped up where people who are working in our health system can get tested and, and people who exhibit symptoms and want to be tested ought to be able to be tested at this point. You know, all of our long-term care, healthcare workers and, and, and residents of those settings are also having the opportunity to, to be tested. And remember, as I said in an earlier, I think it was the opening question about how do we reopen our economy? A condition for opening the economy is our ability to test. Because unless we can identify who has this virus and contain that individual, the virus will continue to be spread. So testing is, is definitely one of those very important indicators that we need to be in place. You ask specifically around the lab tests and whether or not we've been able to get all of the tests out of the labs. And, and that's one of the, the areas in terms of our testing that has not gone as smoothly as it should. And at a time when, you know, most of our labs actually are not working at full capacity in Ontario and that we do have much, much more capacity in this province for testing, both at the lab level and, and at the assessment centers that have been set, set up. So, you know, let's, let's hope that as things evolve and it is one of the measures that the government has put in place to make sure that not only do the number of cases continue to go down over a sustained period of time, two to four weeks, but also the ability to test, to, to track and to trace where those individuals have gone and who they've been in contact with is one of the things that we need to do before we can say we're opening up the economy in any sort of way. We have to make sure that we have the ability to keep our population safe and, and get access to those lab results.
And, and from the, from the city side of things, one of the, this is a huge frustration for us. There's the key, I guess, collection mechanism for, for COVID testing. It's called the Ontario Lab Information System. That's, so if you get swabbed at Centenary Hospital, for example, and all of the test information is supposed to go to the, to the Ontario Lab Information System. And, or the OLS, it's a portal and it's all done online. And what I'm hearing from the, our health staff is that, you know, some of the information doesn't get sent in the right format. Some information's not sent at all and it's creating a lag in the system. And that's one of the things we also need to be looking at in, as we're in this pandemic. As we're, you know, reviewing what we can do better to improve it, to make sure this doesn't happen again. And, you know, unfortunately, if we do get a second wave, that we get the kinks out of the system. So that you, if you think you have COVID nineteen or a member of your family, that you get, go to an assessment center, you get swabbed or tested and it goes to the portal like you would expect it to. And that you get your results back in a timely manner. Because I think that's what's causing a lot of fear and anxiety with people is waiting weeks for testing when they're told they're going to get a result back in days.
Thank you, Mitzi and Paul. Since we got to a late start, I think we should take just one more question. And this one is for Paul from John. When will communal gardens be reopened for the planting season? And when will public safety protocols for those gardens be ready? And will they have access to necessary supplies to reopen safely?
Yeah. So, so right now, so the community gardens, my understanding is they're supposed to, they usually open on May first. We have a directive from the provincial government at this point not to open them. This is also done in consultation with Dr. Devilla and her staff at the Toronto Public Health. Once we have a green light from the province and Dr. Devilla is, is satisfied with the protocols and the, the rules that we put in place around social distancing, we will be issuing permits as soon as possible for those gardens because we really understand how important those gardens are. And we're not just talking flowers. We're talking a food source that a lot of people depend on. We actually have a city council meeting tomorrow. And so we will be discussing these, the community gardens. Because, you know, the weather, beautiful weather, we know that comes with spring. People want to be out there, but they also want to ensure that they have a reliable food source that they depend on each year. So we'll be doing our best to have those gardens open as soon as possible.
Thank you, Paul. So we'll just take a couple more. This one is for Mitzi. For people who are collecting Ontario Works or who are on the Ontario Disabilities Support Program, will their benefits be suspended if they collect the SERB?
No, they, they do have the opportunity to, for those who have some sort of employment income that is demonstrated, they do have the opportunity to collect SERB. The province will allow individuals to keep up to eleven hundred dollars from that, from the SERB amount. So we want people to stay attached to, to the labor market as much as possible and to those employment incomes that they have access to. I do want to repeat for maybe people who have joined midstream that for people on Ontario Works and ODSP, they will have access to an emergency benefit through OWODSP through their caseworker. And it's a hundred dollars and they just need to contact their caseworker for, for that amount.
Thank you, Mitzi. Another one for John. If I am a permanent resident, am I allowed to re-enter Canada?
Short answer is yes. You may have to quarantine and self-isolate for fourteen days as are citizens, as are people that are coming across the border in any incident, in any case. But absolutely.
I think that's called the joys of a Canadian passport, isn't it, John?
Well, well, as you know, it's the best passport in the world.
And that's right.
And so people do use it. It does give me an opportunity to give a shout out to the, to the Minister of Immigration, but also the Minister, the Border Security Minister, our colleague Bill Blair, and also Minister of Foreign Affairs, Francois Philippe Champagne. We have literally repatriated thousands and thousands and thousands of Canadians who've been stuck abroad by this pandemic. And I, I think I speak on behalf of my office to say that we have never, ever received more cooperation from any government. And in all the twenty years that I've been practicing politics, then in the repatriation of Canadians from abroad. So, and I, I think that the government has been, and I know this sounds self-serving, but I think the government's been absolutely outstanding in the repatriation of Canadians.
Another one for Paul. What is the timeline for the city's building permit department to reopen?
What's the timeline for the city's building department opening? We're still reviewing that. We're, we've really, we've really focused on how we're dealing with COVID nineteen. So we're not issuing any new building permits at this point. We do have inspectors that are dealing with any permits that are open now. We're focusing on how we can deal with people in low-income housing situations. We have a report on city council tomorrow. We're looking at building modular housing units to look after homeless people. There's, there's one development that'll be here in Scarborough. But we're really focused and we've deployed staff as well into other areas that are more relevant at this point in dealing with COVID nineteen. So once, as we said, always like to say, once we flatten the curb and we can bring people back into their regular positions, then we'll start issuing building permits again. But it's really flattening the curve and, and making sure we can reopen the economy properly.
I do want to touch on some of those stages. You know, I, I talked a lot about the requirements from a public standpoint, public health and, and what the Chief Medical Officer of Health is, is advising. But once, once we have that, you know, we're getting to that stage of opening, it's not going to be the same as it was before COVID nineteen. It is going to be a staged gradual reopening of the economy and of public life in, in our community. So stage one for businesses that were ordered to close or restricted operations, opening select workplaces that can immediately modify their operations to meet public health guidance. And, and those guidances will be made very clear. Opening some outdoor spaces like parks and allowing for a greater number of individuals to attend some events. But when we're talking about events, we're talking about things like, you know, funerals. Right now, it's limited to ten family members. It's such a heartbreaking thing if you lose a loved one and you can't necessarily gather in a way to provide that important time of comfort for people. So opening up that ability a little bit more. And of course, as we talked about throughout the call, hospitals would also begin to offer some of the non-urgent and scheduled surgeries and, and other healthcare services. So that would be stage one. So, you know, right now we're completely all staying at home and those are the measures that is containing this virus and allowing us to even think about reopening the economy and, and doing things, you know, like getting back to, to construction. Stage two would be opening more workplaces and that's based on risk assessments. And that may include some service industries and additional offices and retail workplaces. And then some larger public gatherings would be allowed and more outdoor spaces would be open. This all has to be done based on safety. And then stage three is opening all of the workplaces responsibly and further relaxing restrictions on public gatherings. So it's not very specific because it all depends on our ability to contain the virus and to, to reduce the spread, so much so that the likelihood of the resurgence is not there.
Thank you, Paul and Mitzi. I think this will be our last question and it's open to all of you. It comes from Kamisha. She says, all of you are doing a great job of sharing information about resources, services and supports available to the public through your e-boss. What is the strategy for sharing information with Scarborough Guildwood residents who are not connected? Like many of our seniors and lower income families.
Well, let me, first of all, take the, this opportunity to thank all of our staff for organizing this. In my case, it's a big shout out to Gabe and to Leila and to Natasha and Essa and Sean, all of whom have worked on making this. This is an opportunity for us to communicate with our constituents. The other big benefit is that it's not just the MP talking to constituents. It's all three, MPP, the MP, the city councillor. And that is a very large pool of people. As to those who are, if you will, not online or not connected, who are technophobes like myself, there is still the telephone. We are open, regular business hours. Our number still works. For those who are slightly more sophisticated, our, our email is still working. We are still responding. We're getting about fifty or sixty calls a day on a whole variety of issues, plus emails. So we are continuing to respond to constituents' concerns. I think we've seen some flattening of those concerns. I don't think it's the curve we want necessarily to flatten, but that's a curve that is flattening. And so I think Paul and Mitzi and myself will continue to try to do this kind of a reach out. And, and hopefully we'll get out the message. I think we're, I think we're doing as, as much as can be reasonably expected, but we can always improve.
What you're seeing here is Team Scarborough and thank you, Kamisha, for the question. You're someone who's doing great work on literacy for, for young people and families in the community. And, and one of the things that we do in my office is, you know, as soon as the pandemic hit and we, we could no longer take walk-ins into our office, we moved to a virtual service. So emails, phone calls, the phone calls are actually forwarded to Juliana who answers those calls on a daily basis during normal business hours. And the daily updates, Catherine and I, you know, want to make sure that we are keeping everybody informed of what has materially changed. And every day something is changing and we want to make sense of the world. So we do that daily update to, to benefit our community. We actually held a, a virtual town hall that a phone call was sent to every member of the riding and, and, and they were able to answer that call. And here, very early on, this was early March, they were able to, to hear the updates directly from, from myself as their MPP. And I brought the former Minister of Health, who is now MP Helena Jassik, Dr. Helena Jassik. She was actually a former chief of, Chief Medical Officer for York Region as well. So she had a, she was a wonderful resource. And, you know, this was, was in the early stages of the pandemic. So there was a lot of uncertainty, to say the least, than what we're experiencing now. So we reach out, we, we're, we're coordinating all the time. We don't have all the answers, but we're seeking those answers. And we're, we're pushing governments at all levels to be responsive to the needs of people in our community in Scarborough Guildwood. The three of us, Paul, John and myself, we talk together each week just to make sure we're not missing anything and to find out what else we can do. We will be putting up posters in all of the buildings in our community so that everyone knows what areas we're responsible for federally, provincially and municipally and how they can get information. One of the things that people have actually said is that they want those daily updates. And, and that's why we continue to do them from our survey. Community members really rely on that information. And, and, you know, the emails that we're getting into our office, we're taking those very seriously and we are responding to those emails. One of the concerns, for instance, that I heard early on was personal protective equipment. It was a big issue for workers who were in frontline responsibilities such as long-term care, retirement homes. And what we did was we called all of our retirement homes and long-term care homes. And we're now calling all of our shelters and group homes to find out what do people need in the community? And how can we get them the, what they need, what services, what supports? And we're all staying at home too, following the public health order. It is an order to stay at home. So we're staying at home, but we're working night and day or over weekends to make sure that we do the best job that we can. And I want to also give a huge shout out to my amazing team, to Catherine, who's moderating tonight. You've done an amazing job, Catherine, and you pulled this together along with other staff from, from the other offices. And also to Lucas, who is new to the team, but doing a fantastic job on the outreach side. And Juliana, who really, when people call the office, they ask for Juliana because she's the case manager who always has the answer to, to very tough questions that people ask our office. And, and we will just continue to be there. Know that you're not alone. Know that if you need help, turn to us, turn to our offices and we will do our best to, to find you the answer that you need.
Okay. Kamisha, I want to thank you as well for the, for the question. I want to thank John and Mitzi for doing this, you know, in part Kamisha's answer about how we're reaching out. The three of us have always worked very well together. On, on one level, it's just old-fashioned politics as, as Mitzi mentioned, right now with the pandemic, the three of us have a weekly phone call to, to make sure and kind of air what we're, concerns are in the community. So we all understand what the needs are and what people are looking for in terms of help and assistance. This past week, we were talking about sourcing masks and what we could do to help group, group homes, long-term care homes, our nursing homes, you know, and I'm glad we have this town hall meeting. I hope we can do more of them. I have a monthly email newsletter or, well, it was monthly, it's daily now or a couple of times daily you can sign up for by calling my office or, or by filling out a form on my website, but a lot of it is my staff and I want to thank my staff. We're, you know, we don't really have standard office hours right now. We're trying to take care of everybody's concerns and requests as soon as they come in. And sometimes that's a 24/7 job. But we understand the health crisis that's going on here and people need answers and the quicker we can get answers to people, the calmer they seem to be and, and we can all move forward together and flatten the curve. Thank you.
Thank you all for, for joining us. Thank you, Paul, Mitzi and John for, for being here, for answering questions and for the care that you show to your community. Hopefully we can do this again soon and I'm gonna wrap it up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Be safe. Take care.
Be safe, everybody.
Bye-bye.